Ask everybody, please stay standing. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the singing of the National Anthem by Martha D. Reyes Gomez. You can load the mic.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light. Was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming. Whose bright stripes said bright stars through the perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets' red glare that was bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, those stars sang a benevolent for the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I'll ask everybody to continue to stand. We're going to salute the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. A true republic, a true justice. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. At this time, I'll have the clerk read the roll call. Counselor Recupero. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Robertson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vido. Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
And Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Ten members present. Do you have a call, Mr. Chairman? I'd ask the clerk to read the call of the meeting. Call of the meeting is from City Clerk Jeanette Centrum White. Please be advised, Leo Robinson, senior member of the Chelsea City Council, has called for a special meeting at the Chelsea City Council for Monday, January 3, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers to address the following topics: Pledge of Allegiance, Roll Call of Members, Oath of Office for the Chelsea City Council, Election of Officers, Roll Call Positions, Seating Positions, and Delegate to the Chelsea School Committee. Remarks from new City Council President.
I make a motion to call the meeting under suspension, please, Mr. Clerk.
Seeing no objections, so moved. And at this time, I would request that the city clerk come forward and give us the oath of office, please.
All rise. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your names. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a city councillor for the city of Chelsea according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, the Charter, and the ordinances of the city of Chelsea. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, I'll call on Counselor Taylor.
Move that the rules for the 2021 City Council be the rules for the 2022 City Council until such times the Subcommittee on Rules and Ordinance meet, recommends otherwise, Counselor, sorry.
Second the motion. Motion is under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved. Under suspension. Counselor Garcia.
I move that the seating for 2022 be drawn at the Organizational Conference held on December 2021 in the City Council Conference Room. That it be moved under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Counselor Cooper.
Adopt under suspension.
Seeing no objections, so moved. Counselor Avellaneda.
I move that the roll call positions for the 2022 City Councils be the roll call positions as drawn in the Organizational Conference held on December 20, 2021.
Counselor Melinda.
I second that motion.
Under suspension. Adopted under suspension. Seeing no objections.
Can we just have for the public just a call of those, the roll call that was accepted? So everyone would know what the order is?
You want the clerk to read the... It's the one I used for the attendance. Right. It's the same order that he used for the attendance. It was the same.
All right, I know, but the public doesn't know. If we need to take a moment.
Do you read the... Clerk will read the actual roll call of the members. Okay, it'd be Counselor Recupero, Counselor Tenari Garcia, Counselor Robertson, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Lopez, Counselor Vega Maldonado, Counselor Avellaneda, Counselor Brown, Counselor Vido, Counselor Nuriel de Jesus, and Counselor Judith Garcia. Okay, thank you. Actually, a few veterans I met with this week asked me to share this tonight at the City Council. Now, as a Vietnam vet, and many who came before us sacrificed their lives so that our democratic republic could continue. Freedom isn't free. It is paid for by those we just remembered on Veterans Day, those we just remembered on December 7th, the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. The least we can do is vote in our elections. Our system depends on us voting, making choices. When we sit on our hands and let others choose for us, we give up our right to complain about results. Voting is not democratic, republican, liberal, or conservative thing. It's an American thing. And thank you. And at this time, I'll open up nominations for the President of the Council. And we will do it by name.
I nominate Counselor Roy Avellaneda.
Who's that, Judith Garcia? Judith Garcia. Calvin Brown seconds, seconds the motion. Seeing no other nominations. The clerk will call the roll. It's going to be by name. By name. Counselor Recupero. Counselor Tenari Garcia. Counselor Robertson.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Counselor Lopez.
Counselor Roy Avellaneda.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Avellaneda.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Roy Avellaneda.
Counselor Vido absent. Counselor Nuriel de Jesus. And Counselor Judith Garcia.
Counselor Roy Avellaneda.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor for Counselor Roy Avellaneda. One present, one absent. Your newly elected president for 2022 is Counselor Avellaneda. At this time, I'd ask the clerk to come forward to swearing the newly elected president.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Roy Avellaneda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties
Incumbent upon me
Incumbent upon me
As the president
As the president
Of the City Council
Of the City Council
According to the best
According to the best
Of my abilities
Of my abilities
And understanding
And understanding
Agreeably
Agreeably
To the rules and regulations
To the rules and regulations
The Constitution
The Constitution
And laws of the Commonwealth
And laws of the Commonwealth
The Charter
The Charter
And the ordinances
And the ordinances
The city of Chelsea
The city of Chelsea
So help me God.
So help me God.
I will now ask for the nominations for the Vice President. Counsel Antonio Lopez.
Giovanni Recupero.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Judith Garcia. Do I have any other nominations? Counsel Robinson.
Second.
Counsel Todd Taylor, seconds. Seeing no other nominations, we'll now close that portion. And we'll ask the clerk to take a roll. You can vote by announcing the name of the candidate you choose to vote for.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Brown.
Counselor Taylor.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Lopez.
Counsel Giovanni Recupero.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Avellaneda.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown.
Present.
Counsel Vido absent. Counselor Nuriel de Jesus.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown.
And Counsel Judith Garcia.
Counsel Giovanni Recupero.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. One, two. Let me do it again. One present, two presents, okay. Okay, we have six votes for Counsel Brown, two votes for Giovanni Recupero, two votes present, and one absent. Your new Vice President is Counsel Brown.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Calvin Brown.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties
Incumbent upon me
Incumbent upon me
As the Vice President
As the Vice President
Of the City Council
Of the City Council
According to the best
According to the best
Of my abilities
Of my abilities
And understanding
And understanding
Agreeably
Agreeably
To the rules and regulations
To the rules and regulations
Of the Constitution
Of the Constitution
And laws of the Commonwealth
And laws of the Commonwealth
The Charter
The Charter
And the ordinances
And the ordinances
Of the city of Chelsea
Of the city of Chelsea
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We'll now take nominations for the newly elected Delegate to the School Committee. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Tenari Garcia.
Do I have a second? Counsel Leo Robinson, seconds. Judith Garcia nominated.
Who's nominated?
Not, uh... No, Tenari Garcia.
Okay.
At this moment, Counsel Brown asks we close the... Please state the name of the candidate for school delegate.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Tenari Garcia.
Present.
Counsel Robinson.
Tenari Garcia.
Counsel Taylor.
Counsel Garcia.
Counsel Lopez.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Counsel Avellaneda.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Garcia, Tenari, or...
Got to clarify. We got two Garcias now.
Two Garcias. Tenari Garcia.
Counsel Vido was absent. Counsel Nuriel de Jesus.
De Jesus.
Counsel Tenari Garcia.
And Counsel Judith Garcia.
I will go for Counsel Tenari Garcia.
Okay, you have nine votes for Tenari Garcia, one present and one absent. Your newly delegate to the School Committee, Tenari Garcia. Counsel.
Please step up.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Tenari Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Perform all the duties
Perform, perform all the duties
Incumbent upon me
Incumbent upon me
As the delegate of the School Committee
As the delegate of the School Committee
According to the best
According to the best
Of my abilities
Of my abilities
And understanding
And understanding
Agreeably
Agreeably
To the rules and regulations
To the rules and regulations
The Constitution
Constitution
And laws of the Commonwealth
And laws of the Commonwealth
The Charter
The Charter
And the ordinances
And the ordinances
Of the city of Chelsea
Of the city of Chelsea
So help me God.
So help me God. Can I have my... No, no. I'm sorry.
Congratulations to all the newly elected City Councilors and Vice President and our school delegate. At this time, I'm going to introduce our special guest, State Representative Dan Ryan, who has served our community since 2014. And this will be not the last time he visits, that's I'm sure, but certainly the last time he will be here representing us as a state representative. So I want to welcome him and thank him for his years of service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. President Avellaneda, congratulations. Thank you. City Manager Amber Sino, distinguished members of the City Council, colleagues on the School Committee, in the audience or watching home on TV. Whether you're newly sworn in for the first time or you've been doing this for years, thank you and congratulations. Thank you for stepping up and putting yourselves out there and being willing to confront the issues and discussions of the day openly as public servants. Especially now, in a time when many people retreat to the anonymity and safe distance of social media. A time when people look for the news they want to hear rather than the facts they need to hear. You have all chosen to be part of the solution, to work to get the facts straight and share them in a public forum. Thank you again. I also need to acknowledge my colleagues in state government, Rep. Jessica Giannino and Senator Sal D. Domenico. As these peaceful transitions of power take place all over the Commonwealth this week, we split up and we work as a team. Each one of us goes to different cities to make sure that the cities and towns and the people elected in them know how important your partnership is to us in the State House. This also brings me, as Counsel Avellaneda had mentioned, to a bittersweet acknowledgement. Due to the constitutional ten-year redistricting, tonight I address this esteemed body's inaugural session for the last time as your state representative. Wow, didn't think that was going to be tough. As much as I love and inspire, and am inspired to represent the good people of Chelsea, I do live across the bridge, as people know. At this time next year, you will be represented in the great and general court by one of your own. Someone who walks the same streets and rides the same buses. I cannot stress the importance of this enough. Because when all the issues and policies are debated and the ideological lines have been drawn, the foundation of our democracy is still geography. You all know the cracks in your sidewalk better than I do. A profoundly Chelsea-based seat is something you have fought for and you have worked collectively to obtain. Cherish this opportunity. As you know, I don't really usually use prepared statements, but this one was important, so... And by the way, you're not getting rid of me. Whomever the voters in Chelsea choose to bring your collective voice to the House chamber, that person will have strong allies waiting to greet them. Rep. Giannino and I will always have Chelsea in our hearts. And Sal will be right down the hall in the Senate chamber, making sure we haven't forgotten the work we have started and want to see to fruition. Soon, we will open the doors to a brand-new quality residential home for soldiers and sailors who have served our nation as... who have served our nation here in Chelsea, as well as opening up a new state-of-the-art public housing complex in the Innis Apartments. We have increased school funding, especially for our gateway and immigrant communities, as well as packed landmark environmental justice legislation. Chelsea's elected and volunteer leaders were a driving force behind these issues, both locally and statewide. In closing, I want to acknowledge the great leadership in Chelsea over the past two years, including the residents themselves. The past two years have been a harrowing experience for our nation and particularly communities like Chelsea that were hardest hit by the COVID epidemic. The people of Chelsea carried this state through a crisis by getting up and going to work on the front lines when many of our citizens in the Commonwealth were able to work from home. You banded together, brought your ideas and concerns to the fore to not only advocate for resources, but to physically help deliver those resources to your neighbors when they got here. When our nation was torn apart by racial strife, Chief Kaiser and his officers and their families marched with the citizens of Chelsea rather than policed them, expressing to the young people who ably organized these events that black lives truly matter in Chelsea. These are the examples of humanity that inspire me. Chelsea inspires me. I did not lose Chelsea to redistricting. I am gaining a teammate, a colleague, and a friend, and the Commonwealth is gaining another powerful voice. And the good Lord willing, I will be the first to welcome that voice to Beacon Hill as you have welcomed me here to Admirals Hill and the other great hills here in Chelsea. Thank you again. Congratulations to all our councilors and their families. Still got a year left, so...
Thank you, State Representative Dan Ryan, for your words. And also, I want to not only recognize him, but we also, of course, want to thank the City Manager for being here, Tom Amberzino, our superintendent. We have a number of department heads that are here tonight. Members of the School Committee are also here, and I want to recognize their efforts in joining us. Good evening, everyone. To the 2022 inauguration, the COVID edition. I just want to thank my colleagues again for nominating me and putting me in this position of leadership. It never gets old. I still get choked up just now, so it definitely means still something. I don't know if it's because you hopefully believe in my abilities in the last two years and my leadership. Hopefully, it's not because you guys don't want to do this job. Because it does add a lot of time. It takes time away from family, a lot of responsibilities. And of course, I promise you that I will fulfill my duties here to the utmost and dedicate the attention that it deserves. And I want to thank again... And I want to thank, again, I'm looking forward to working again with Paul and Fatima because they've done a great work. And of course, I wouldn't be able to do this job without their assistance, so I want to thank them. I also want to thank my friends and family and the voters, of course, who put me back as a city councilor in the beginning. My father's here tonight, my brother's here tonight. No worries, we took the proper precautions. My father has his mask on, he took his vaccine and he got his booster shot. I told him he didn't have to come, but he, you know, he still wanted to be here. I can tell you that my mom is definitely watching on Facebook Live, so I'll say hello to her. Her and my brother. She's in Italy right now. And, you know, she's in Italy because my brother, who is a, many of you know, my brother Nicholas, he's a bit of a traveler. He stations himself in Singapore, he's been in South Africa, he's been in Florida, and now he wants to work remotely out of Italy and Europe. And to that end, in order to help that happen, my mother is assisting him through getting a citizenship because of her lineage, and that's why she's there. It's taken a lot longer than she wanted, but isn't that what mothers do? They help their children fulfill their dreams, hopes. And in a way, I thought about it and I said, isn't that what we're here to do ourselves? Many of us here. Don't we want to just make the world a better place? For our own children, our neighbors and such? Of course we do. So I think it's to remember what the reason we're all here for. I was asked if I was excited about this next term. I've served twice, two different timelines, first ten years, 98 to 2010, and then second iteration, this is my fourth successive. And whether or not I'm still excited, and I said, how can I not be? Yes, I've had a recent sit-down with the city manager, we talked about the next six months, what's lying ahead of us for this council, how we're going to plan about it. Yes, I'm excited, I have my own idea, I've been working on a community impact home rule petition that will codify mitigation for the community on development. I'm excited about that, I'm excited about all the other things that we're going to do, how we're, community, how we're going to spend the opera money. There's many things that are coming forward that I am still excited to work on. But, there's something else. If you don't take the time, I want to take time to just recognize what happened here recently. And that is, this community, if you've taken a look at our roster, half of this board is now women. I knew I'd get some audience clapping, if half the audience anyway, so... But you got to take the recognition of where we are. I mean, again, I started off, when I came on board, there was just, there was at most two women on the council. Started off with Madeline Portnoy and Martha Rosa. Then it was Rochelle Bennett, and then I served with Dora Santinello and Rosie Bon Giovanni. It just seemed that there was this little cap. And then recently, the last two years, we had four. And now we're up to five. And I just think it's great that we're having this diversity. Particularly, the night of the election, when I was celebrating with friends and family and some of my other colleagues, I mentioned, I'm really excited about this particular group. I want to go back to saying how excited I am because we have this next generation, I'd say. I mean, I watched this generation grow up, some of them. So it's special. See them come up here. So it's not just my night, it's their night too. And with that in mind, because I'm not afraid to share the spotlight, I want to introduce you to some of the new ones who are coming on board, I'm excited. First one I want to talk about is, of course, Norielles. She's been a big advocate on tenant rights in this community, workers' rights. And I'm excited that she's going to be able to bring that advocacy, you know, front and center to this, to this council and even more so in a position, continue to work at the state house. So again, if you'd like to say a few words, Norielles, I invite you to say a few words if you'd like to address, because this is your night as much as it is mine.
Thank you, Roy. Norielles De Jesus, I am extremely honored and humbled to be here tonight to represent District Three and as Roy mentioned, to uplift all of those concerns and all of those opinions and all of those ideas that my district and the city has around housing, affordable housing, affordable homeownership and just the right to have a roof over your head. And so, thank you again, I'm excited to work among all of the councilors. Thanks.
Tanaydi Garcia, I got to know firsthand, working hand in hand at the local food pantry. I remembered Tanaydi when she first started working here at City Hall. So she, you know, used to work in Billings. And she's a mom also, and that's the other thing I forget to mention, that we have so many more moms on this council. Like me, she used to own a coffee shop, I still do, but she had a coffee shop, you know? So I appreciate, again, having another person who's owned a business to have that perspective. I think that is needed here on the council, and I'm excited to have someone with that experience, you know, and that perspective. And of course, I appreciated working next to her every day, well, nearly eight months anyway, at the food pantry, you know, helping our residents. So I'm excited, Tanaydi, if you'd like to say a few words?
So, buenas noches, mi gente bella. I just, I'm truly honored. This is my city, this is where I was raised. I remember going to Tito's Bakery, seeing Roy as a young child asking for empanadillas. So I just, I want the best for this city, I want the best for my children and our community, and I'm here for it, and I'm here for you guys. And I'm honored to be working with such a wonderful group of people. So thank you, thank you for your votes, thank you.
I have to introduce Melinda, not that I have to introduce her, but to say that, again, someone who has had a great role model, she's here tonight. She's been in politics since she's been in diapers. And she's been great to work with the last four years. And again, I'm excited to continue to work with her. And I know that she's now going to have some ammo and some, some friendly, uh, some friendly help with her on this council. So I'm looking forward to seeing what her and her allies have to bring to this council. So Melinda, if you have a few words?
Hola, muchisimas gracias. Es un placer estar aquí. I'm super privileged and honored to be here. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for everyone, all my constituents, who voted for me, all the volunteers and my support system, my family. I can't, you know, I can't thank you guys enough. My beautiful boys that are my inspiration. We don't do this work for the money or for self-interest, you know? This is because we love our city and we want to do this for our children and what's best for, for our children. I mean, it's a privilege to be Gladys Vega's daughter. She, you know, I can say so much about my beautiful mother inside and out, you know? She's truly an inspiration. But if anyone ever doubted that powerhouse of a woman that she is, these two years that were extremely, you know, terrifying for our community, she did so much and, and not by herself, you know, with unity, with everyone around here, with community members, community leaders. And that's what I want to do with all y'all. And I'm super proud of these ladies next to me and, you know, to be here. And Kelly, you're out there too. I love you guys. Thank you, thank you all.
Last but certainly not least, I want to talk about Judith, of course. I'm glad that she's back with us. And, you know, she, she joined, she came in at the same time I came in during my second term, I like to call it my second iteration, Roy 2.0. And immediately from the beginning, I was impressed with her. I, I knew her background, her work, working with the symbolists here in the community, her advocacy. And she's been very professional with the work here, and I'm looking forward to continue working here on the council. So thank you, Judith, if you want to say a few words also.
Thank you, Council President Roy Aviandera, everyone. Tonight, I have the extraordinary privilege to share this stage with four because one is watching us from online, I know. But we have four dynamic, powerful women who are mothers, organizers, business owners, advocates, fearless advocates. Ladies, tonight is your night, and I am so excited. I am so excited to share this historic moment with you because as our council president mentioned, it is the first time that this body actually represents the city that we represent out there. We have more women here, and as I sit here right next to you, I can't stop but think about my mother who immigrated from Honduras to this country, to this city, seeking a place that was affordable, seeking opportunity, just like the thousands of families that Gladys Vega in La Colaborativa serves that stand hours in line waiting for food, waiting to secure shelter. My mom came to this country seeking that, and all of you have a great understanding of that because of your lived experiences, because of the work that you do every day. And I am honored, I feel so privileged to share this space with you. And I can't wait to continue to write Chelsea's story alongside you. So let's get to work because there's a lot to be done. Thank you.
So let me just leave you with this message. Last year, the motto was, you know, "Don't be afraid to make enemies, be brave." And this, I want to say, if the pandemic has taught us anything, it's the following. We have the ability, we have the attitude, and we have the conviction in this community to work together and overcome dire circumstances. But the resources have to come from outside. And only the strong advocacy will get us access to those resources. Failure to provide critical aid and policy changes to benefit communities like Chelsea is measured in loss of lives and livelihoods. It's immoral, it's unjust. What obligation is there in communities to Chelsea, to cities like Chelsea that we are the front lines of so many societies ill? Name any issue, I dare you, whether it be we don't have the best transportation, best access to healthcare, clean air. There's so many issues you could pick for communities, and sadly, we are, we are not alone. But I'm, I'm not disappointed, I'm not weathered, I'm not hardened. As I said, I'm excited because I look at this council and I look at the people in this community and I say, we can get this done, we can fix those things. So with that, I will be thanking all of you for joining us tonight, and that concludes our council meeting. Thank you.